I'd like to call this city council work meeting to order at 6:00 PM. For roll call, Member Girba, Member Rice, Member Hermout, Mayor Pretend Dillon, Mayor Marl, and Councilmember CEO will be late. Mr. Lesh will be absent. From staff, Acting City Manager Cole, Clerk Royal, City Engineer Humphris, DPW Director Happala. That's all. So moving on to, we need an approval for our agendas. Is there a motion to move for either submitted or amended?
Move to approve as submitted.
Mr. Girba, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hermout. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll hold off doing absences to ensure that Mr. CEO and Mayor Marl are able to join us. So moving on to public comment. Under the Open Meetings Act, any person may come forward at this time to make a comment or question to city council. This public comment period is limited three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required, to state their name for the record. Are any public comments? Don't see anyone in the audience. Clerk, did we receive any?
Yeah.
So none. So moving on to our one and only discussion item, which is the GIS presentation. We'll turn it over to Ms. Humphris.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yes, I'm here with DPW Director Zach Happala, and with us in the audience is Paul Ford with OHM Consulting Firm, who has been helping us with GIS. And we appreciate you coming in an hour early to talk to us. What we're hoping to do is to show you how GIS is a tool that we use on a daily basis, and how it's so important to us for effective asset management. I think we've spoken a lot to this council about our asset categories, the three categories we've made of essential, safety, and community enhancement. Those asset categories can be split into linear assets and vertical assets. And by that I mean linear assets are the streets, the utilities, the items that are out in space and have locations out in space. And those are really what GIS is so helpful to us. And that's what we are looking to dive into a little bit today, and how we use GIS to manage these assets. We are presenting a lot of data, and we're trying to keep it to the GIS questions. We've got about 20 minutes to talk in if you can bear with us. But then we are hoping for a back-and-forth discussion. And we'd love for you to come to DPW and talk more in depth. If there's one of these particular programs that we talk about today that we want to talk more about, because we have a very limited timeframe, we'd love to have you out to DPW and show more of it off. So that's why we're here tonight. I don't know if you have anything to add to that intro. So, okay, so I'm going to just get going. Paul's here for technical support. He's the one who put all this together. And he's the one who definitely makes it all work behind the scenes for us. So I think I said a lot of this on my intro there, but basically GIS is a tool that is used to display spatially referenced information and their attributes. For us, it's especially important for our essential attributes. Think of water main distribution system, sanitary sewer collection system, storm sewer collection system. Those are items that are underground and difficult to find if you don't have proper records with them.
Just open it up.
Oh, yeah, do. Make it look even better.
There you go.
Does it work from there, though?
Yeah.
All right, well, let's...
You'll want to move out of that, Tasha, because that won't be interactive there.
See, it won't be interactive. Is there a better...
Keep it that way.
Do I do this? No, I don't want autoplay.
We'll just keep it that way.
Yes.
Okay. Technical, small technical difficulties. That's what you get when I'm controlling the mouse. These are just a couple examples everybody uses every day, right? So Zillow, Google Maps, these are things people are using. GIS, where are we going to go get dinner tonight? These are examples of GIS data. Before, how did we find our maps and stuff? I think, I don't know how many, you know, everyone's been downstairs in the basement. This is where the plan room is. This is where all of our plans are stored. So later in this presentation, I'm excited to show you how we electronically store our plans now. But there was a point where I literally spent a whole entire day down here looking for one plan set, something now that takes me five minutes to do. So how did we use... Not only the paper, we also used a lot of this institutional knowledge. Like, have you ever gone out in the field with field staff, Zack's staff? They are awesome out in the field. I don't know how they remember where bitty-bitty curb stops that are literally this big around are located at, but they can find them. But the problem with the institutional knowledge is it gets lost when the person retires. So that's another benefit of GIS. We're also using it as our base for sewer and water modeling that we're going to talk more about with the Water Master Plan and show a little bit of today. And where this all comes together is the capital improvement planning that we'll talk a little bit about at the end of this presentation. This map right here is our basic overall. Again, I'm going to dig in deeper to this map later, but this is our overall utility map now that internally staff has access to. These are all of the layers that we have access to. I'm just going to show as one example. The sanitary sewer district's just one. You hear so much about east belt, west belt, and central belt. Well, now here at a click of a button, you can go see where exactly is the split between. This is east belt. Central belt is very small. West belt is in the green. You can actually zoom in and look at that information. Next, actually, I'm going to turn it over to Zack now, get some of the routine maintenance programs.
Yes, we touched on a lot of the capital side of things and the planning, but with that, that comes with the actual data collection on a day-to-day basis, right? So that's coming from any type of reactionary type things that we may feel over at the DPW, whether that be from residents or even things that my guys are seeing out in the field. But again, for instance, right here, we've just got our routine hydrant work, right? So we've got, this is the flushing module that OHM assisted in putting together for us this go-around. And as you can see, it shows 501 of our 549 hydrants that were flushed. And so when my staff were going through, they could actually turn these modules in real time and actually show, if you actually tracked it, you could actually see where we were at on what day. And it actually gave the exact time that these hydrants were flushed. So it shows 11:00 AM on May 4th was when that flushing was completed. It's got all the manufacturer information on it. So it really kind of dives in-depth for us and then assists my staff out in the field when they're going through, right? It gives them a visual representation of where they've gone, how much they've got going ahead, helps for planning, things of that nature. So again, now we get into, like I said, we've got a lot of reactionary things that we've got going on. And this helps, this dashboard here helps us kind of track a lot of the information. So again, it's not historical, right? So this is our water main break dashboard. It lists out all the dates and the locations of which we've had those water main breaks. So again, we've got this one over on Woodland Drive while we were repairing the water main, had a bit of a boo-boo there. And so it just kind of lists out all the information to the side here. First valve turned on, first valve direction, second valve turned on. So it actually goes through what our response was to that brake. So we can actually see what was isolated. It tracks all of that data and information. So again, if I've got a working for person that's out for a few months, and I need someone else to step in to help lead the crew, they've got all this information at their fingertips, right? We can, no one's replaceable, but we can at least have the information to make as best of a response as we can. So some of these things are amazing tools that we have put together. This is another one. So this is our TMF grant, our water service line inspections. So it's actually being tracked in real time every time Dukes is going out in the field and doing the investigations. As you can see, they've got 373 that have been completed. And then obviously, we've got a map down here at the bottom, shows the amount of copper, galvanized lead on the private side, and then copper, galvanized, and lead on the public side. And we can, we'll be able to dive into this a bit further. So right here is something we're hoping to roll out here in a matter of days, at most a couple of weeks here. So OHM's been assisting us in having a web dashboard for residents to be able to access and get a lot of FAQ information on what lead and copper is, on what the differential is with galvanized, and different things like that. But what's really cool, and on the GIS side, is we've got our lead and copper rule map. And so this is actually tracking those exact locations. And to the left here, you can kind of see the symbols for whether or not all red is, it's been led on both the public and the private side of that service lead, or if it's only on the public and not on the private, vice versa. So you can actually zoom in and see spatially where these are at. And so you can see if it's in yellow, that's still to be verified. Green, everything checked out, was copper on both sides. I think these types of tools are a really good indicator for even our public to now utilize and have a visual representation of things, right? This is something that they can navigate on their own. They don't have to call us and access this. It's not hiding anything. It's complete transparency while also having the ease of application for anyone to be able to navigate through.
I have a question. So if they see that they have something that's lead, is there resources of how they can, what are the next steps for them?
Yes. So we do have, when that is being identified, the homeowner is being mailed a letter almost immediately, letting them know that we've identified that. But that's also, so right here, have lead pipes, right? So what is the service line that was responsible for it? And it kind of goes through all types of FAQ information, right? And so it's got all of this information at the tip of their fingers that they can read up on, get more informed, and then call us if they've got any further questions on this information, right? But we want to be able to provide as much information to our residents and keep everyone as informed as possible.
So can they click on their dot, and it'll show their, all their information for it? So, okay.
Yeah, it'll show, yeah. So if I... So like this, for instance, right, 225 Highland, it shows the public connection, private connection. We're both copper.
Right.
And the year that the home was actually built. So again, those are the things that are still being modified and added to there. And again, if I scroll back through, this is our actual inspection list that actually has the date of which it was inspected. And we're kind of going through that methodically.
Does it show the ones that are not inspected yet?
Um...
Like, they're on the list to get inspected, because we're not 100%, right? We haven't inspected 100%.
Correct. Yes.
Does it show those ones that are TBD?
Yes. Yep. So anything, like, anything in the yellow here would be, still needs to be inspected. So as we're working through, we're still adding to this list. So we started with anything in a green belt or grassy area. Now we're moving into all the hard spaces. So anything that may be in a roadway, or in a driveway, or in the sidewalk, because that's where cost picks up a bit more, we'll get through those, figure out what's left over, and then continue to move through more of those unknowns to utilize that grant to its fullest. But again, all of these tools are extremely helpful, not only to us, but to the public, to yourselves as well. I think that's what makes GIS so great to utilize. And then lastly for me here is, so I've got SAC in town doing a lot of CCTV, doing assessment on storm sewer and sanitary sewer, and then they'll be transitioning into lining of those mains, depending on if it can be lined or if it needs to be open cut replacement, right? Trying to intertwine that with our road capital improvement plans and really utilizing effective asset management. But again, on this, we'll be able to actually see which lines have been CCTV'd on what date, have all the information. And so you can actually click on that pipe segment here, and it'll tell me the diameter of the pipe, the material. It has our asset IDs on it, the last televising date, any comments. We can continuously tweak these things, right? So if there's more, if there's more information that I'm wanting to see on this, I can go, hey, Paul, can you give me this on a scale of 1 to 5 for criticality? Can you do this? Can you color code it this way, right? It's never set in stone. Any type of map, any type of layer that we create, we can always make tweaks and pivots to, which makes it such an amazing tool to utilize.
Oh, yes. Back to me and my pictures of the drawing room and the filing system before GIS. This is just some close-up pictures of what was behind the doors here of all these rolled-up plans. And this is what we have now. And I've actually opened up a separate tab just to make it more full page. So we have created these polygons throughout where you can actually click on now and pull up the original ass-built set of plans. So for instance, if we go down here, like Curtis Park, we go to this very, this older transmission main, which I think is super cool, because it's the 1958 West Belt truck line. This is a set of plans that one of the interns found that was one of those plans. It's like, yes, you found it. This is awesome. We actually have this set of plans. But you can see, and one of the reasons this is so important for us, so it actually shows the plan view. This on north is, here's the dam. Here's, north would be looking this way. But it's also got the profile view. And this is what is so important for us for multiple reasons. It shows how deep the sewer is. It shows the size of the sewer, the slopes. These are all important for modeling. And so we're to the point now where we can go anywhere and get these older plans. We have plans from 1930s, from when the dam was originally built in here. We have the original set of plans from this building from 1975, I believe, when this first building was built, and then the subsequent set from 1999 for the site. It's just a tool that I have to stop and remind myself of the progress that was made. I mean, this was, we were definitely, it was very difficult to respond to design mystic requests when I had to literally go dig in the basement to look for the plan sets, which if this was, which what happened all the time on this, it was supposed to be in this lot, you know, and these were all, had numbers on them and such. So it was supposed to be in this one, but it wasn't in that one. So then what happens? It got moved out of that one, and then you're just digging through all this stuff there. So we made a lot of progress with that. And I'm just really proud. That's something I'm really proud of. Another item that I'm really proud of is the drinking water master plan. So we talk a lot about the linear assets with this. So one of the things we were able to do with the most recent required update from Eagle for the master plan was to do it in an electronic fashion. And this is, what you're seeing is an internal page. I'm just going to one of the pages. But this is actually where we did all the hydrant flow tests. This is the real-time data that we did last June when we calibrated our system. This is important because we often get asked by insurance companies, from commercial users, of what is the available fire flow. And these are the actual hydrant flow tests that we use. We can take a screenshot of this and send it to somebody. It's just a really cool feature. So there's other things that are in here that we've been, that maybe at some other time, we give a more detailed analysis of our actual water system. But it's just kind of capacity of our actual distribution system itself, tracking of water complaints. We're using this to track our water complaints. These are all tools that are helping us to effectively manage our distribution system, which has some very old components to it, which is what this next map shows. This is a map of just our distribution system by age. And so the yellow ones here are our oldest ones from the early 1900s to our newest pipe here that's more in the black. I think about half of our system was built before 1995. I think it's about the cutoff of the median age of our water main pipe. It just, it becomes concerning that some of those old cast iron pipes were not cement lined. That's where it really leads to tuberculation buildup in the interior of the pipes. So having those older assets, they just don't get better with time. It's just one of the systems that we own older assets with. And I thought this was just kind of a cool-looking map to kind of show that, if you just look at, even you can see it with the shading, about half the shading is lighter, about half the shading. And you can see how it's, obviously, we expanded. You know how it grew from the center out.
Yeah, if I may, right? So like this, just on the surface, maybe, like, okay, cool. We've got the ages on here. But when we're trying to identify capital improvement plans for water main replacement or lining projects, right, we can kind of crosslay this with that water main break dashboard, right? And now we can see, okay, where are we having the most issues at? What's the age of that? Where are we getting quality complaints, right? We can kind of start to utilize all of these different maps and modules and actually have a visual to things. It's not all just numbers and words in an Excel doc or whatever, right? Like, there's actual visual to these things that kind of breathe life to all of it.
Okay. That's pretty much the end. And we have other applications down here that we've, like, are not motorized, is all laid out in this particular one. This is one of our PESA rating ones, which is the road application. This is a tree one, the water complaints. So there's other ones. We have links here, too. Again, we were just trying to give like a high-level view of how we're using GIS on these linear assets. And we'd love to hear, you have any questions you have.
Thank you very much. Okay. Do you want to start at the end, and we'll work our way down?
Yeah. Ms. Hermout.
This is great. I can't believe we were functioning the way we were functioning before. And thank you for staying through all of those files. I'm sure that sounds harrowing. I really like the lead and copper identification. I think that's going to be a great value to the, sorry. I really appreciate the lead and copper service line identification. I appreciate, I remember seeing this a couple of years ago when this was in the thinking process, and I really liked to see that we've activated this. It's a really big win for the city. I also see this as a triangulation tool to guide capital budget and anticipate risks. So, good job. Thank you.
Ms. Rice?
When did we start this project?
So overall GIS, I think the first year that we had an annual proposal, at least when I was here, was '22. So that would have been in June of '22. I'm not sure if, before me, the previous DPW director might have had some. But we basically started the annual proposals to align with our fiscal year budget in '22. So this is...
So this has all been turned around in three years, essentially. That's a feat. That's amazing. A couple of comments. I'm a GIS nerd. I love making, yeah, anyway, maps. Awesome. One thing for the acting city manager that came to mind is perhaps having a conversation with our communications consultant to take a peek and just strategically think in the future about public dashboards, and like, what the public would like to see. That way you can build it into your proposals, you know, in the future. So like, you know, next year, this public dashboard, next year, that public dashboard. But I think having the consultant communicate with you all on like, what you've heard, plus what they've seen in other locations would be super helpful. Because from a council standpoint, we're like, yeah, put it all up there, right? But that might not be practical and feasible. You mentioned, Zach, that any time that lead service lines are identified through this process, that you're reaching out to residents. When you reach out to residents, just for my edification, is there an action that they are required to take, or is there an action that is suggested for them to take? Or are we taking, yeah?
Yeah. So on that, so Bill Briggs, who's our operator in charge, is responsible for sending out those letters 21 days after, or there's a 21-day window for us to send that letter out once we've identified that it's lead, right? And so that's just kind of giving them some FAQ information on what to know. What does this mean, right? And so there are some precautionary measures that you can take, right? Obviously, there's a reason why we're trying to change all that lead pipe out, right? There can be more exposure to it. But that whole letter kind of gives what those mitigating efforts can be for those homeowners, and gives them an outlet to reach out to us and have us work with them hand-in-hand on that. But right now, still identifying how many we have in the city, because, I mean, to be honest, with having a decent amount of unknown, you can always hit a pocket, right? And you've got that same developer or contractor that was in an area installing all those same homes. It just takes that, those couple for it to kind of snowball there. So that's kind of where we're at right now. Luckily, we haven't found many. They've been very sparse. They've been very sporadic throughout the city. We haven't had a cluster or a pattern. So that's good. But that's where we're at at the moment.
So if folks haven't heard from you, they can, if folks have seen a hole in their yard and they haven't heard from you in a month or so, then they can assume everything's good to go?
Correct. And then that's, I think that's the greatest thing about this as well, right? We're looking to roll this out almost as soon as possible. So that way, this is something that's just accessible to everyone. So again, if they've seen, hey, they've been out there, it's getting updated almost in real time, correct, Paul?
Yeah.
I think it's within 24 hours, they're going in and updating that on the module, on that TMF grant module. All of that information is being documented by Dukes and OHM while they're observing and translating that over to us. So that's really just a dashboard for us to then get those notifications, look into further. So yeah, these are all tools that we can have as a web dashboard for these residents to inquire and look into as well.
Thanks. That's all I have right now.
Thank you.
Ms. Girba?
Just kind of the idea, you know, Ms. Rice mentioned about it, too, but when do we, when are we going to roll out something to the public of this? What do you, it sounded like you guys were talking just a minute ago, there might be something available in the next month or so to actually present?
Yeah. So this website right now, I wanted to go pull it back open, just to, so it's in the final, like, QAQC portions. OHM still has some modifications to make on it. For instance, I just saw even when you were in here a second ago, when you were out, like...
So the goal would be to put the lead and copper service lines out there, not necessarily all the other information, or...
I think it's in the very last, yes, I believe a month is plenty of time to get it done. It's truly in the last QAQC portions right now, where they have to fix a couple of things. Like, even when you were just scrolling, they still had the surface water instead of a groundwater source. Like, there was one figure that just, hang on a minute, to me, is showing a surface water instead of a groundwater. So we need to show, we are a groundwater source. So that's where we're at now. We're nitpicking the final things before final publishing.
I'm just glad that we'd be that close to ruling some of this out.
Yes, we are very close.
For me, one of the things is, it always comes back to risk management and looking at those things. So this information pretty much presides a lot of information that potentially could allow somebody to access a water system or to get into something, because now they know where it is. How do we address that? Or is that not seen as a concern from that perspective?
As far, I guess, can you elaborate a bit further as far as...
Well, we're going to be able to identify where all our water mains are. And so if somebody wanted to tap into the system or do something to it, it's there. I mean, it's where we have right now with our fire hydrants and some of those things. So are there any concerns from that perspective of this information being sensitive for anything that we're putting out there?
Yeah, I wouldn't be worried about that from a risk factor, like you said, right? The hydrants are already visible. A lot of this is just showing the actual service lines. So as you scroll in here, this map isn't showing any of our mains, right? That's not showing, even on our GIS map that we had, when it's the full utility viewer, yes, that's showing the mains. But from a visual aspect, that's not showing the depth of how far down, right? GIS is all like, relative, right? It's not exact. So when you're looking at things, sure, I've got, right here, you can see that this service looks like it's resting on the eastern edge of the driveway approach, right? That may be in the middle of the driveway. It may be right next to the driveway. It's not always pinpoint. Now, we can get certain things to be... Now, we can get certain things to be pinpoint accuracy, right? But I, but there's no, no cause of concern for, for a risk.
Because even when you're showing the integration and going back to other plans and things, so some of that stuff is there, I just don't know at what level we're going to, and I'm sure the security allows how much we can do, so that's good to know.
Yeah, this, that, what, what will be going out to the residents will just be this, what you're seeing right here, this interactive map. When we get into the utility viewer and everything, that's all just on our end. Yes.
It's all internal sat has. And we actually, we have it on phones too, like, so that's a smaller version on the phone.
And you know, because kind of the thing is even us members of council would love to kind of see some of this, but I know where we need to be careful on how we do that and everything. What's left to incorporate that you feel at this point?
What is, yeah, what isn't there?
What is a priority right now that isn't there that we need to focus on or provide more funding or?
Yeah, so.
Condition assessment, my mind's going.
Yeah. So right now, we're, we're in the process of doing condition assessment, right? So that's what, that's what you saw for the, for the CCTV and sewer lining, for our sanitary sewer and storm sewer, right? That's, that's getting through that and investigating and identifying, getting the, the footage or a rating value situated to different things. And then as we start moving forward, right? That's, that's what I love about these is it's all malleable, right? So if we find that there's, hey, we want this tool to now serve this purpose, hey, Paul, can we, can we make a tweak here? Can we make a tweak there, right? And we can, we can move all these things to the way we want to see it. So what I, what I love more than anything, right? And this is what I pull open every single morning when I, when I step foot into the office.
Actually hoping right there.
For lunch?
Oh, yeah. So, no, unfortunately.
Now he's, he's actually there now, which was he like?
Yep. So that's whatever in my lunchbox, right? Whatever in the fridge. But, so this, this utility viewer here, right? I open up this every single morning, right? Almost every single decision, especially, I'm, I'm here almost five, five months now. Every single decision that I make, I open this up first, right? Because I have all these different layers that I can turn on and turn off to first try and find information, right? I don't need to pick up a phone or send out an email to ask someone information on things. I can find, I can look these up by myself, right? If I've got a resident that calls, I can look up any historical data in that area and try and make the best possible determination I can on just about anything, right? So I can turn on the sanitary utilities and get in, right? And so when I open this up, I can open up the actual sewer main itself and find information and data on it. I can open up the actual sanitary manhole. And so again, that's what I'm trying to get us towards is for a work order system as well, have those work orders attached. So that way, when I, when I click on a, on a gravity main or I click on a sewer manhole, I know when we've worked on there, right? So if I've got a problem child, I've worked on it four times in the last two years, well, maybe, maybe it's time to stop doing a Band-Aid repair and look at this thing as a whole. And so I think that's what, to your point, right? What's the next steps? It's continuing to gather all this data, right? And have it all housed in this and collect. That way you start recognizing those patterns and start identifying where, where those problem areas really lie.
You answered my next question was about integrating with the work order system and BSNA and everything else. Because I know even talking with Chris Atkins, a similar type of thing that they've been doing. So having this all together is excellent. And then my last question was just, as we look at this, how are we, you know, auditing it? What are we talking in terms of additional money for this? Do we have sufficient funds in our budget right now to maintain it, not only, I mean, maintaining it besides adding additional modules or areas? Is there something else that we need to consider in our future going forward? Any of you three?
Well, I think those are great questions for a couple of reasons. One, you're right, it absolutely takes continuous, it's a living thing, for lack of a better way to put it. And it absolutely takes continuous input to make it accurate enough. So it's not something, and that was, I think quite frankly, one of the things that went wrong with the previous SAW. We got money from the SAW grant in 2017. We inherited some software, but we never had the in-house staff to run said software. So even though we got the software for free, it really didn't benefit us because we didn't have the resources in-house to run it, right? So that's a very fair question. And one of the benefits I think we have with OHM is that we are, we're budgeting right now $100,000 a year. That's what our budget is. And that's what we've been spending for the last three years. The benefit for that is that we could hire somebody for $100,000 a year, but you understand with benefits and stuff, that's, their salary sends substantially less than that. But we're getting high level GIS professionals that are making $100,000 a year as part of that $100,000, because they have a whole team of people behind them that can do multiple different things. So I don't think that the long-term answer is necessarily us bringing it in-house, it's just to make us more efficient with using it in-house. So the more we get to what Zach's ultimate goal is, is a work order system that actually works directly with this data, the better off we will be. I, I am missing, you know, the internal, the other engineer. I mean, that was helpful for that technical capacity for in-house maps, for working with staff, those types of things. And we're, we're filling that gap now with consulting. But I, I think I've answered two of your three questions and I'd forgotten what the third was.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think again, it just all speaks to the more data we collect, the more we utilize this on a day-to-day basis, right? It's, it's identifying what gaps are there? Where can we utilize these things? And that's where, that's where Paul and his team are, are tremendous assets for us, right? We, we, we meet regularly with them, right? And if they've got, hey, we've got, oh, I don't know, City of Livonia, for instance, right? We, they asked us to roll something out and we looked at this and we put this together and thoughts, right? We're doing something similar with you guys, right? Like it's, it's all just one big think tank, right? That's kind of the beauty of, of the, the public sector is we're all just kind of testing out theories on different things and trying out different, different tools. And everyone's starting to really dive deep into the GIS. And we've got these guys over here that, that are kind of doing it all for a lot of different places, right? So not only can they leverage their expertise and knowledge, but now they're actually working with it hands-on, right? They've kind of taken their baby steps elsewhere and are like, hey, we can, we can run for you, right? And so that's, I think that's, it's just a, a living, breathing thing that there's not necessarily one thing that needs to be targeted to upgrade. It's, it's a ton of different things.
So we basically had the majority of the base started and then we're just kind of doing most of it. That's good. And I do appreciate Tasha for you identifying the issue of providing the knowledge or even the training and such for in-house efficiencies, because that's kind of where we do at times, I think, need to invest a little bit more towards being able to give those, your users actually the ability to understand the data and be able to work through it. So what do we need to do in terms of that? I'm more than supportive. So thank you very much and great job.
Mr. CEO, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. Just kind of harkens me back though to, and it's a sign, I guess, of how old I am, the 1980s, the early 1980s, when Fred Bull from City Data Processing in Ann Arbor and myself representing the Ann Arbor Police Department went to a conference on this new concept called geographic information systems to a conference in California. And what a task we had coming back to the city of Ann Arbor and trying to convince them to spend the time and money to invest in this new GIS idea and what all could be accomplished through it. From the police standpoint, we were talking about crime mapping, about sign inventories, about, you know, where things, traffic accidents occurring at a particular intersection, whether the design of the intersection was such that it created, helped create those accidents. So it's wonderful to see that we're now employing this to the extent that we are and this wonderful dream has come true. So, thank you. I know the big debate then was whether to use DIME files, I think, or TIGER files as the base map for street inventory to try to provide a, a framework in which to input all this GIS data that we knew we had, but it was all on as-built paper copies. So it's, it's wonderful to see.
Thank you, Mr. CEO. I've got a couple of quick questions and then we'll go back around since we have a little bit more time. And I want to make sure that we leave time for the consultants to also speak. So Mr. CEO just hit upon a point. So talking about sort of the above ground, the trees, the signs, the light poles, that I know we had started that at one point. Is that something that we're continuing to inventory?
Wait for it.
Art structures, buildings, that type of thing?
Yes. I was trying to be funny there, but it's lagging behind. But yes, we do have.
Well, one of 5,691 files, so I think it might take a little while.
We do have, we do have geo tags on all the trees, right? And so that's, that's all been spatially located within the system and was, was obviously a, at different times, we were tracking tree removal, needs, needs pruning, right? I think we've gone away from it a little bit, right? And this is a big, big push of mine to get this integrated in with our work order system, right? So we, we truly have a mechanism in place that's, that's tracking where we're removing and replacing, where we're, the more spatial data you have, it's better to get it off paper and into an actual like big picture type of thing, right? And so I think from a sign, from a sign aspect, that's something that we can include into it, right? Those are all things that we're looking at adding into. Now, you've got LIDAR out there, also a little bit upfront, but you can go out and kind of spatially locate everything. And they basically just run a program that they, they plug in a few of the different characteristics and they can extract whatever they want from it, right? And they, they can throw it into a GIS map if that's what we want, right? That's kind of the, the beauty of our as-needed contract that we do with them, with OHM every year, right? Is when the, things like that come up, we can say, hey, Paul and your team, what, what would it, what would it take to do something like this, right? What do you need from us? What do you think the time would look like? What do you think the cost would look like? Can we fit this in within, within the frame that we have, right? Setting priorities for us of, hey, how do we, what is priority right now, right? And if that's, we need to do as much as we can on, on condition assessment of, of the risk criticality, right, on our essential things. And then as we start moving forward, hey, are these, these other things, signage, right, which is a safety asset, so it still carries a huge weight to it? Can we start to tackle that and put it into here, right? And so now, I've been working on getting an as-needed contract in there. So when I've got a sign that needs to be replaced, I just click on it and we just share this information with whoever our vendor is, right? And they're just on the fly, they're knowing exact, exact location, exactly what, what we're looking for. And it all just kind of becomes seamless and intertwined.
I, I think I was thinking too, is there an opportunity for it to be the other side of like the forward-facing, the community side, where somebody would be able to go in and say, hey, this tree has a down limb? Or here's where a pothole is, like sort of making it into like a real-time tool aspect? Or like, you know, the light poles are down. I mean, DTE has made it a little bit easier by having numbers on the poles for us. But again, you're back to, okay, I've got to be walking and take a picture of it.
DTE now has a process where you can go in there, it has the lights on the street and you can drill down to the light, just kind of like what we're identifying here. And then you can report it. You can't do an entire street, which is what I tried the other day. But yeah, that type of thing and that tool would be great if you could do something like that.
You could just do something like that.
Yeah. And so that's, again, that, it all ties into our record system, right? What do we have available to us? Now, I haven't seen that in another community. Paul, have you seen that?
Please go to the mic.
We, we've put together some, we call them citizen problem reporters. So we have put together some for some communities where if a, you know, resident spots, you know, name the, you know, utility issue, they can report it using the citizens problem reporter, which is in this vein of participatory GIS where the, the people using the GIS are also the, the creators of the GIS. So it's a, you know, that's a tool that's out there as well. So, you know, there are a lot of options available.
Thank you. And one just last question very quickly is, do we own the program, the software and the data?
No. So all of that is, is housed through more of like a cloud-based, right? That, that OHM is managing for us. And I think right now, you can talk to our IT director, right? Like to have the bandwidth to keep up with such a thing, right? So now that kind of gets into the staffing, right? To have an administrator, to have a technician that's overseeing it, to have the IT bandwidth to troubleshoot and keep up with the software, continuous upgrades, a lot of things when we're entering in. So there's a, there's a feature to this that you guys don't always see is, is field maps. So Tasha pointed out that, that my staff have these things on their phones as well. And so they can add things into field maps. Well then, they'll have it set up where at night, at like midnight, those, those attributes or whatever we're entering come into typically like Arc Online GIS. And so OHM will, will filter through those, figure out what makes sense, what doesn't, tweak things and integrate that into our maps. So now it's, it's real-time data that is being reviewed and added onto. So when, to say, is this our software that we own or, this is all of, all of our assets that we own, right? They're all things that we, we pay for, all services that we pay for. But at the end of the day, it's kind of more of a, a cloud program. Paul, maybe you want to elaborate a bit more? I think I touched on maybe 85% of it.
Yeah. The, the software, so the city of Celine purchased access to the suite of Ezri products. And included in that is the ArcGIS online environment, which is primarily software as a service operating out of the cloud. Ezri, the manufacturers of all these programs, they operate those servers. But also, you know, Tasha and Zach, they have access to the desktop software should they choose to do any desktop edits. I will say that, you know, if Tasha and Zach decided tomorrow that they were done with OHM, which hopefully they don't, but, but if they made that decision, they do own the data, or the city does own the data. So if they decided to walk, you know, the data's theirs, the data's yours. And, you know, it would be incumbent on, you know, the city to then decide, well, how are we maintaining this subscription to the Ezri products? But the city does own the data for, for any future use.
Thank you very much. So while you were out there, I was going to say, is there anything that you need to or would like to add to the conversation tonight?
You know, I, I'm really happy we're having this conversation. You know, I too am a GIS nerd. I love GIS. So I'm, I love that we're able to showcase what we've done. I think we have done a lot in four years. I've been at OHM for five years now. And the, the leaps and bounds that we've grown with Celine and with a number of our other communities, I think have been pretty enormous. I love having this information at the fingertips, the, you know, Tasha's example of the, those as-built records that you can just click on the polygon and then pull up the, the, the as-built itself is just such an incredible example, I think, of what GIS provides. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I, I think I can, I'll leave it there.
Thank you very much. So we can go back through if there's other questions, please let me know.
Quick question for Tasha. Did we, are we getting rid of some of that paper stuff just to get it out of here so that it's not, you know?
Yes. And I think it was last summer, at the end of the summer, we told DPW they should have brought the dump truck to get rid of all of the paper that got hauled out of the basement. And they were wishing they had brought the dump truck and not the trucks. What I'm finding is that we had, and which made sense, but we got like seven copies of everything. So we kept one master copy. The goal was to get to one master copy in the basement, which we probably could wean out, but I'm still old enough, I don't know, I want one paper copy, I guess. But, but, but we're, and we're still needing to go through, so I've gone through the engineering files, I've gone through most of DPW's files, but there are files downstairs in the planning. There's files out at the rec center. There's file, I've gone through the major ones at both the plant sites, but there's plans, I should say, there's plans below the police department. We've gone down there, because we were looking for something with the basement here, right? And there's this whole other set of plans in the police department. It's like, where'd these all come from? So we're still working our way through those, but we at least have a starting base, which is, which is awesome.
Cool.
But then we're, like you said, you're thinning some stuff out so we don't have this big plethora of...
Absolutely.
Perfect. Thank you.
Just real quick, is there any hope to maybe, and I just mentioned it a little bit ago, about bringing in the buildings and being able to inventory everything within the buildings? Because I know we were moving towards that when I was still at U of M, so that you had the ability, when you were doing renovations or changes and everything, you could track all of that stuff.
And I'm going to pull... This is our... So we've done this now with the water system. And so we have, with the water system as part of the water master plan, we have this inventory of vertical assets. Now, this is where we have actually gone through, and there's 266 assets here with the water plant. And you can, like for instance, we can sort by remaining useful life. This is what I'm trying to get to, actually, this column here. I want this to go. So this is one of the items where we've taken, you can start to see some of the items within the water plant that are nearing the end of their remaining useful life, based on their condition, based on their age, based on all of this analysis. This is one site we've done this to. And another item that came to mind when you said what else do we need to do earlier was vertical assets. So GIS obviously is a great tool for the linear assets, but this, a tool like this is really... And so we have other vertical... We have not only the wastewater plant, we've got historical buildings, we've got the rec center, we've got the DPW. We've got all these other things that this building here itself, in theory, should...
Exactly. And that's kind of the thing that I know, just as you're mentioning, looking for plans and everything about the basement, how great that would be to bring all that into this. And again, that's another aspect for when we all leave eventually, that information's there, so great. And then I know the other part of it is the GPS, but that's part of an inventory process and everything else, so thank you.
Mr. CEO?
Do we have the ability in our system to accurately judge the depth of some of these sewer lines, water lines, and so on?
Yes. So we do have, and part of this, so like, for instance, right, well, first, this is kind of cool because we get an aerial now, we're near maps. This is from April of this year, so you can see with the plant under construction. This sewer line has been relocated already as part of the construction. As you can see, it goes right through these new aeration tanks. So this still needs to be updated in GIS, but I just think it's very cool that you have that data right there. So if I'm going to go over here though to Curtis Plus, we have some deeper structures here, and I think we might be able to see them right here. So this right here, that's a 17-foot, that right there, it says invert, so that's 17 feet down, and that particular one does have the depth on it. We don't have, it looks like we have an elevation of the invert, but not the rim elevation for whatever reason on this particular one. So this is the invert is where the pipe is at. And so if you have the rim in invert, you can figure out the depth. That's another way to figure out the depth. This was also the plan set that I showed earlier, so we're populating that off of this data here that's on the plan set. So this is the profile view of the sanitary sewer. So here you can see, and if you were to go over to the side here, you would see what the scale was for somewhere on this usually, about here. This is an elevation of 740 feet above sea level. So, and this is the sewer that's running along Curtis Park, very near the river elevation. I believe our river, the Saline River is somewhere just below this, right? That's probably down here in the 710ths is where the Saline River elevation is. So yes, your short answer is yes. And that's critical to modeling, for the hydraulic modeling of our sewer system is getting that. And this is the base for our model.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I think City Manager called. Do you have anything?
I have a question. I'm sorry. Tasha, when you have, can you go back to the risk matrix?
Sure. I think it's here, this one?
Yeah. So it says possibility, or I'm sorry, probability of failure scale, it says minor deterioration. Do you quantify what that means, moderate, minor? Is there more of a definition of what that quantifies as?
Yes, well, I think it is a, what do you want to say, a scale? And this is something that between the consultants and our operators has gone back and forth, so that has been a point of discussion. How about that? Between what the engineers initially... So we brought in OHM engineers to do all of it, and then they took all the data to the operators. And then the operators, they were in agreement. So it was a back-and-forth discussion on where all of those fall on the scale. There is a small description for each of those, but I do think there is some level of interpretation.
I think we... Is there a move to solidify that a little bit better?
I think we have, we're working towards that right now with the operators and the engineering firm. That's something we're working.
Do they indicate when that would be better defined?
When is our next meeting between the two of them? So it's basically a work in progress. We have money in our next fiscal year budget for just these purposes. So what we have done is check the bare minimum box, if you will, with Eagle. We've submitted our updated master plan, updated data to the state of Michigan, and we've included money in the upcoming fiscal year to further stress this and further look at this very situation at the water plant specifically. The water plant is about 25 years old now. There's just some components that are nearing the end of its useful life, no matter what way you look at it.